Call this meeting in order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is public input. I'll remind you, you have five minutes, and the only person who signed up is Patrick Hoskins for Main Street.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, City staff, members of the community, I'm so hap- so happy to report to you today. We've had some staff changes at the Main Street project. I'm very happy to announce that we have chosen Lucy Whitmarsh as the Director of our program. I am happy to also let everyone know that the Board has voted me in as President. We have a new Vice President, Rudy Dominguez, a new member of the organization, and Marcia Stout has agreed to be our Secretary. Steve Townley returns as our Treasurer. We are very excited about these changes. We really look forward to continuing our work downtown and making this a great place for all of us to live. So, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Council Comments. Council Bettisak?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow night, barring any horrible weather, because you never know what's really gonna happen in New Mexico, especially in Silver City regarding the weather, the- my conversations with the Councilor for District One will occur, it's from 6 to 8 p.m. up at the Student Memorial Building, in the third-floor seminar room, hopefully it'll be large enough. We have conversation starters, including the recent burglaries, and we have- I've added another special guest, and that will be Chief Reynolds. He'll be attending as well to discuss the recent burglaries. A lot of folks in District One have been commenting about those and are concerned, so we'll have some, hopefully some answers and talk about what we're doing. The police have increased, once again, saturation, it never really stopped, but it seems to be stepped up even more. So, I would say beware to those burglars. People are out there, and people in District One and other parts of town are making sure that the people that they see walking around and driving through their area actually belong there. So, I know that there's been a lot of activity with folks beginning to form and look at neighborhood watch groups, so just wanted to mention that. If there is something where the weather's so horrible and the streets are horrible and I have to reschedule, it'll be on Facebook. Hopefully, I'll know early enough that I can see if it can be put up on the town website before 5:00. But, right now, I think the clouds are just trying to scare us, because it doesn't really look like much is supposed to happen tomorrow, but like I said, the weatherman is not always the best at determining what's really gonna happen here in Silver City. So, that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council Emsen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last December, we passed a resolution requesting Legislature, the Governor, the Attorney General's Office, and the Office of Licensing to address what's called loan sharks, or high-interest, low-amort loans in New Mexico. And I just wanna bring you up to date that currently there are three bills filed about that, two from the House and one from the Senate, sponsoring interest rate caps on those loans. So, there is some progress, and it looks like there might be some action on that issue that is really important to keep our citizens from being pretty much extracted of their money. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to see if the people from Silver City can tell the city workers, thank you for doing a lot of good work. There's a few employees, and they do a lot of good work, and Mr. Brown knows about that. Also, I would like to see some people, anybody, to write some comments on what needs to be done in Silver City, and leaving on windows, in case they don't want to show up here. They can be anonymous, they can post it, and then empty burden and silver, and I'll pick them up and make a study of them. That's what I would like to see. Also, in downtown, why not get the businesses, people, to play some music and entice the people to come and shop downtown? Any kind of music. Think outside the box and see people come down. I've been talking to Mr. Brown, and Mr. Marshall, and Mr. Moran is here. And I would like to see if it would be feasible for Mr. Brown to study his situation, now we're gonna have a bridge done. The bridge, the new bridge on Hudson Street, why not, if possible, clean down on the bottom, have the DOT on the park there, equipment there, and why not see if they can make a big, open area and have a big park there, put some barbecue glows or whatever. People from downtown are saying that there is nothing downtown, but let's try and start something down there, and people can come and go going downtown, down to the big bridge, and also it'd be a starting point for the trails on the brick, on the, on the, on the big ditch, both north and south and toward Boston Hill. Those are just some of the things that can be brought up. I think we have to do more, take more on economic development, and also I think we have to help Western a little bit more, and I'm pretty sure Western will help us out. Thank you.
Council Connor?
Upside.
I could add one more thing. Vote is coming up, even when we're running on votes, vote. The other ones, please vote, your vote counts a lot, and hopefully the people who are there can vote. Whoever you want to vote over, please vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Ray. Council Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just recently attended a Disability Advisory Council meeting, and the Disability Advisory Council is a partnership between the Town Silver City, WNMU, LifeQuest, the Grand County Health Council, and a few parent advocates, and they've been working really hard to open the Disabilities Resource Center, and that's gonna be opening in February with the grand opening planned for April. And it's amazing, the work that they've done so far, so if you're interested at all in that, you can either contact Evangelion Zamora at LifeQuest, or you can contact the Office of Social Work at WNMU, and they will get you involved in any way you'd like to do that. I'd also like to, like Council Ray said, encourage people to vote. Right now, we have a school board election going on. Districts 3 and 5 are up right now. There's early voting from now until January 30th, from 8 to 5 in the Grand County Clerk's Office, and on February 30th, actual election day. It's very, very, very important that everyone in District 3 and District 5 let their voices be heard for Silver Schools. And the last thing is, I would just like to encourage constituents to get involved a little bit more. Things get put in the newspaper, they get put on the radio, they get put on the town website, weeks, even months before we make a decision on something. And it would be really helpful to all four of us if we could hear from you before we make the decision. If we get your opinion before, then it will be part of our decision. If we get it after, there's not really much we can do. So, if you could do it before, that would be really great. And our contact information is all on the website, also three of us are on social media, so look us up, and we'll be willing to interact with you. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody need round two? Council Ray?
There was a situation here about a week ago in our neighborhood. The police department killed a pit bull, and also, this is for the people that have their dogs unchained, please, please keep your dogs chained, or in good quarters. Be, be wise to them. And this dog here, it's not the first time it's gone after somebody. I know, because I've seen it. And the police department had to get rid of it, and it was a pit bull, so please be careful when you're walking. Thanks.
Thank you. You know, it's good to see a number of our Main Streeters, in fact, a lot of familiar faces from, from years, and if I'm not mistaken, the group originated in 85 or 86, so we're coming up on 30 years of this group helping out our downtown area. And when it was established in 85, we had a lot of boarded-up buildings. Sometimes we hear people complaining about our high vacancy rate, but trust me, we're nowhere close, and it's hard for any, most of us in modern day to even imagine what it was like in 85, 86, but this group's done a tremendous amount and brought us a lot of assets to our town, a lot of activities, and really helped make our area very vibrant. I, as a business owner downtown for the last 13 years, I've seen differences in just this last 13 years. And just as another comment, I've heard some people say, "Well, downtown looks like it's dying." In the last 13 years, it's actually far more vibrant now than it was 13 years ago, so I give a lot of credit to that group, and I'm glad there's so many of you here too, in the audience. Thank you for the update on the new leadership and the new director. Hopefully, this group stays intact for a while. I know we've had some, a little bit of turbulence, and hopefully you guys do some good work in the future. Thank you. Also, I've been, I think there must have been a class at Western that encouraged their students to write various leaders, whether it was federal, state, or municipal, or various people, because I ended up getting three or four letters from Western students, and I answered back and had a good conversation with a couple students, and there's some neat things that I'll be talking with Alex about, but you know, there's, there's some very active people in the Western community that want to see us feel more like a college town, and I think we've talked about it, and we really wanna see that happen. As we progress into the future, I think Western's gonna be a far more important economic driver than it has historically, and very needed for our community as we need to diversify out of some of our natural resources that have been really the backbone to our economy, and hopefully we can, I'll share some ideas with Alex, and maybe we'll be bringing those up in the future. So, I really appreciate those comments from the Western students and anybody else who ever wants to communicate with us. Along with what Council Ray was mentioning on giving some feedback, please remember we have an anonymous element, I'm gonna say, on our website where you can give comments, and I know I go into it about, about once a month and just read through it and see what kinda comments, and there's some interesting things, and I've tried to move on some, and then on others, try to mitigate certain issues if we can, and it's been very fruitful. And I appreciate all those comments that have come in, and please utilize that website. Does anybody else need round two? Good, moving on, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Approval of the minutes. Council Bettisak?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the regular town council meeting of January 13th, 2015.
Council Emerson?
Mr. Mayor, second motion, as stated.
We have a motion, as second, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, January 13th, 2015. Is there any discussion? Call those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion closed. Next item on the agenda is reports. HCD, George?
Check, check, test. Good evening, Mayor, Councilors, staff, fellow citizens. Thank you for having me. I'm George Julian Warren, Social, City Arts, and Cultural District Tourism Director, here to give you a quarterly report. Before you have a sheet that I've prepared for you, I will briefly cover some of those things so that others that haven't received it in the room will know what we're talking about. But I want to, before I jump into that, I want to, I wanna highlight a couple of important things that have come up most recently, specifically leading to this session of the state legislature. The Secretary, as all of you know, the Secretary of Tourism position is in transition. Rebecca Latham is going to follow in footsteps of Secretary Jacobson, who has moved on to a new role in the state government. And I would like to, you know, stress the importance that the New Mexico Tourism Department has played for Silver City and Grand County. They've been tremendous in supporting us through the cooperative grant, they've supported us through their regional marketing, they've supported us in providing us with access to professional services that we wouldn't otherwise necessarily have access to. They've provided us access to their PR firm that has provided us with leads to traveling journalists that we've hosted, that has led to some of the wonderful press that we have received. I cannot stress how valuable New Mexico tourism has been for our community, and I would like to just put out for all of us who have contact with our legislators to throw our support behind Rebecca Latham as the new secretary, and to acknowledge her staff going forward for all the support they've given us and all the continued support that we look forward to from that department. Second thing I'd like to report at the state level is that we've had, this community's always been involved with the Tourism Association of New Mexico. It's been a strong lobbying force on behalf of tourism, a very important industry, as you know, for us, and they too have gone through a change. The Tourism Association of New Mexico has merged with the Lodgers Association of New Mexico to form a new organization referred to as the New Mexico Hospitality Association. And I believe this is an extremely important and valuable growth move at the state level and for all of us at the, at the regional and municipal level. Essentially, I think what this creates is a much stronger advocacy and lobbying organization on behalf of tourism and hospitality in general. The organization has doubled in size by membership, but it's also doubled in size in terms of visibility. So, it's something I wanna bring to your attention, you'll hear more about it. I've been elected to serve on the Board of the New Mexico Hospitality Association, so Silver City is playing its part at the state level, as always, working to increase our visibility and our participation and partnership across the state. So, you'll be hearing me report more from the New Mexico Hospitality Association as well. I also would like to encourage those in our community that are active in tourism, whether you're an attraction, or you are a hotel, or, or you have an organization that's supported through tourism, to consider joining an organization like that. I think there are a lot of resources that, that are available at that level that can serve all of us in, in many ways, in networking and, and otherwise. So, that's two things at the state level that I just wanted to bring to your attention. At our level, six to eight weeks ago, Town Council, you all voted a resolution to designate the Visitor Center as a, as an urban trailhead. It's an awesome, awesome move, we're very excited about that. Along with that, you followed that with a vote to support a grant that the Arts and Cultural District partnered up with the town on, and I'd like to report that we have submitted that grant. It was to the Department of Transportation. It was, it is designed to facilitate that trailhead designation with an outdoor kiosk, with a, a map of our area, specifically highlighting our outdoor recreational assets, our prime hiking trailheads, or some of our historic sites and our attractions, all consolidated onto a driving, biking, hiking, wonderful find everything in Silver City/Grand County map. That's part of that, as well as updating signage to trailheads in particular and to some of our attractions. So, we wrote a wonderful grant. Thank you for all the support that we received from the town on that. We look forward to partnering up when those funds come through, through the Department of Transportation. With that, I turn to the report that I gave you. It starts out with the Visitor Center. We've just concluded six months managing the Visitor Center. It is alive and well. I thank Rebecca Martin, who has been spearheading visitor services on behalf of the town and area. She's doing a phenomenal job. I'd like to thank the volunteers who do a tremendous job with great enthusiasm, and I'd like to invite anybody from this community who has an interest in hosting to reach out to Rebecca and to volunteer their four-hour shifts. It's a wonderful place to be. People are on vacation, they're smiling, they're happy to be here. It's, it's, it is one of the funner places to, to work. But the Visitor Center saw a 19% growth in the second quarter, and this is really due to the fact that we are growing partnerships, and we are growing the Visitor Center really as, as a cultural focal point for our community. An example of that would be that Western, you know, recently had 100-plus students come from Mexico, and with our partnership with Western, not only are they using the 101 in their, in their outreach for admissions, they're using it with their visitors, they're using it with homecoming, they're using it in various departments, but also they see the Visitor Center as, as a starting point to our community. So, we had all of those students come down in three different visitations. Rebecca did a great job in presenting Silver City and Grand County and all there is to do, and many of them came back numerous times. They came back at the end of their visits to say goodbye to us, to thank us for guiding them along in their visit here, and to say that they'll be coming back in different capacities. So, we, you know, that's one example of many. As you know, we've also been serving as headquarters for many of the festivals and events. It shows when we look at our metrics of the Visitor Center that we see spikes of people coming into the Visitor Center around the Gallery Association's Red Dot Weekend, around all of the other, the other festivals that have housed themselves there. We're looking forward to doing that. We're going to have just a little sneak preview here for Tour de la Hila. We have a really phenomenal exhibit planned in the Visitor Center around, hopefully it's gonna be some high technology that'll be in there. For the Blues Festival, which you know has added a bike component, we already have procured a, a classic Indian motorcycle that will be on display in the Visitor Center, along with, we will be playing music from the different bands that will be coming to the Blues Festival. We did that last year for Pickamania, it's the first time that music has been introduced into the Visitor Center. It's fun, it's, it's, we're just having a great time with it, and it's starting to show, both in the numbers as well as the growing partnerships. And to just give you a sense of that, you know, we, just this week alone, I've been having conversations and growing partnerships of the Visitor Center and tourism with the Silver City Museum in interpretive exhibits, with the Department of Transportation is coming down to work with us on trails. We're talking with the Forest Service to expand that partnership and how we might do more with them on tourism. We're talking with the Park Service, they're coming into their 100th anniversary, and how we can market that better. We're in conversation with the Marketing Department this week with the State Parks Association. We just placed a full-page ad for City of the Rocks and Silver City that's absolutely gorgeous, that's the beginning of that expansion of partnership. We are working with Southwest Festival, The Written Word, to go out to the Book Festival, and we'll do an exhibit and hopefully be the headquarters for them at the Visitor Center. We are also going to Arizona Bike Week, which is a motorcycle event in March, to do outreach for Silver City and represent the Visitor Center. We're doing that in partnership with AMAC. I mean, the Visitor Center is, is alive and well, so I'm very pleased to, and I could, I could go on about that one, but I won't. The other thing you see on here is we have the billboards going up. For those of you who've been up to Santa Fe, you've seen two of them out there, four more hopefully are in this week, two more following that on I-10. We are also looking at expanding to digital billboards in the airports in Albuquerque and Tucson. We're talking with Clear Channel about that, to, to have digital billboards that are changeable on demand from our desktops, which we know that the people going through those airports are cultural travelers, they're the type of people that we want to invite, and that will come to Silver City for our, our wonderful assets. The 101 Things to Do in Silver City is alive and well, and that partnership continues to grow. On this list that you can see, you know, we've had requests, unsolicited requests, by the way, from the Lord's Brook Visitor Center, from GRMC for recruiting nurses, from DND's Organic Haven in Glenwood, Motel 6, Fort Baird, HMS, and as far away as Vail, Arizona Farmer's Market. So, that's alive and well, and we'll be also, we're in discussion to do 101 Things for Youth to Do in Grand County, a local program to help with, you know, things to do for youth during the summer, a drug prevention program, and so 101 Things continues to do good work in that way. We also produced a tree, 101 Things to Do Christmas tree that went on auction at a local fundraiser, and was bought by one of the local hotels. The press continues to focus on us. For those of you who didn't see it, it's online, "I Love You Silver City" in the Huffington Post, True West recognizes us as one of the top 10 destinations, Western Towns, Taste Magazine in Canada picked up on us and did four pages about Silver City in Canada, gonna say in Canada. The Raleigh Observer has covered us as a, as a destination, Trail Runner has picked up on us, and Dr. Bettisak, thank you for emailing just recently, one that wasn't on my radar, was from the Albuquerque Journal, did a wonderful piece on Western New Mexico University Museum. For those of you who haven't seen that, it's fantastic. So, we continue to have wonderful coverage by the press. This is stuff we couldn't pay for. We, we also have, you know, upcoming more journalists that we continue to host here. We hosted National Geographic, we hosted the editor of New Mexico Magazine over the New Year. We have two visiting, we have visiting journalists coming this Thursday from Forders, and we have a, another journalist lined up from Santa Fe who has an incredible blog that I will tell you more about as that unfolds. So, the press continues to really run wild on us, and I'm really proud of the efforts Power of Partnership is on my list here, and this is just, this is a touch of, you know, a drop in the bucket. There are so many people that are making this whole thing successful. All we really do is, we're like a mirror, we help to, you know, direct the mirrors so that other people can shine, and that's all the organizations, the individuals, the associations that we partner up with regularly in this community to do all of this good work. And on this, you can see a couple of things, you know, the Balloon Fiesta, we And on this you can see a couple of things, you know, the Balloon Fiesta we went to in partnership with New Mexico Tourism. I already mentioned the Silver City Museum is working with us on interpretive displays, the Art Association, and, and on, as I mentioned, some of the other partnerships that we've been working on. Phenomenally, the Cliff dwellings and the West and City of Rocks, you can see 59% and 61% growth over last, last year. Incredible. What we attribute this to in part is that we're redirecting traffic. With the catwalk closed and that becoming common knowledge and the visitor center and others working to speak to that end, I think we're seeing a lot of people increasing their traffic to these other, these other attractions. That's one of the things that we believe is, is attributable to that. And while in the second quarter, you know, these are quiet quarters, we did not see the same numbers that we saw in the past with Silver City Museum and Western Museum. I think both of those attractions continue to see growth as we've seen in my previous reports. So, we're, we're so encouraged by those being primary attractions. And then our social media is going gangbusters and that's under Jesse Thetford and also partnership with all the other Facebook users, Pinterest users, Instagram users from our community and statewide that we continue to, you know, go online and we highlight them, they highlight us. All of us do this, that's what social media is all about. It works for all of us when we scratch each other's back, so I encourage all of you to go to New Mexico Tourism on Facebook, to look at us on Pinterest and to participate online in social media on behalf of our community in your own venues and in your own way. So, we continue to grow that. One of the most interesting pictures I saw this week was a picture of, as we all saw, you know, millions of people showed up for the Pope. He's, he's quite the attraction. Six million people gathered to see the Pope. I saw a picture, this was at a conference of the New Mexico Hospitality Association and one of the people talking about the value and importance of online today. We all know it regarding smartphones, but he showed a picture of, of, you know, 20, 15, 20 years ago, that same crowd gathered in front of the Pope and you saw the millions of people, it was impressive. He showed the most current picture of those millions of people facing the Pope and what did you see? You saw millions of cellphones up like this, millions of them and everybody taking a picture. We know this is the way of the world, we know this is the way that it's going. The next generation, it's, it's all mobile media. And so, you know, social media is only one component of that, but you'll hear me continue to talk about how we're going to be developing tools to reach audiences in new ways outside of print, outside of billboards and how that traffic is, is, you know, carrying all of this data in their pocket and how, how do we get into their pockets? Thank you. I'll take any questions. Any questions? Counselor Miss Smith?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, George. I do have some questions, so bear with me, please. I was looking at this and thinking about this for, ever since I got it. One of my first questions is the comparison of data. So, I have two comparative data questions. One is, when you're, when you're talking about up at the visitor center, I go to the visitor center at least twice a month, are you talking about just this year compared to last quarter or are you talking about this time last year compared to this time this year?
We're looking at it in a couple of different ways, just so you know. I mean, I can show you a much more comprehensive breakout than a one-liner.
I guess, so time series is, shows more, so you do have those.
The first thing that we do is, you know, we look at quarter to quarter and because we inherited statistical evaluations from a different organization and were not entirely clear as to what their systematic methodology was, it's difficult to say that we're comparing apples to apples. So, we'll say this might be an apple to an orange.
Or an apple to an orange.
But we do know that we're, you know, in some components, we are, you know, we're doing it identical. We know that we're, we're counting the facility usage, that means how many people walk through the door, right? Versus how many people are visitors that come up and sign a log that ask, answer some of the questions about where they're from, what they want to see here, how long they're going to stay. So, you know, and so what we've had to do with, you know, taking on that data management is to make sure that, we started with our own baseline metric to make sure that we were doing it as systematically as possible so that this time next year, we can definitively say
Okay.
...what we know
Thank you.
...from our own gathering.
Thank you. So my next comparative data question was I wasn't quite sure on the attractions because I used to volunteer at the visitor center and I had to stop when I got so busy with other things. But when you say that there's an increase, for example, to the Hila Cliff dwellings, is that actually referral numbers from our visitor center there or is that people who come in and say they're in our area because of the Cliff dwellings?
No, these are, we, these are part of our partnerships with those entities and so these are statistics that are reported directly from them. So, these are provided to us from the Park Service at the Cliff dwellings, these are reported from the ranger station at City of Rocks, from the Western, Western New Mexico Museum and from Silver City Museum. And we are also engaged, it's not, it just doesn't stop there. You know, we're having a dialogue, so we're, we're saying to Western, okay, so, so if we are down numbers, what, what do we think this means? We don't, we don't know, but we can surmise some things. We know that they had, you know, they're closed during numerous weeks during the holidays. So, that
Record, yeah.
Right, so their numbers are zero during those times. But, but we are, you know, and so then we're looking at, and it's wonderful because these entities, you know, in that conversation are looking, we're saying, so, okay, where are yours coming from? Do they align to ours, Arizona, New Mexico, El Paso, Tucson? We're comparing data as well, so we're learning a lot and again, this is only a six-month-old endeavor, but the engagement is there to expand this, you know, as just one component of what these partnerships look like.
Thank you. That's very wonderful, the measuring that network effect, that network referral effect. Bear with me, I've got a couple of other questions. If you put me, you know, I'm going to ask
I'm only here once a quarter, so.
So, here's the thing, so I love the Huffington Post about falling in love with Silver City and since you already have this wonderful platform about 101 Things to Do in Silver City, are you thinking of expanding that platform and maybe doing things perhaps with residents, residents about things like 101 Things I Love in Silver City? Or for the foodies, building on the Oedipal, Arizona and the other foodie thing, 101 Things to Eat in Silver City? Another potential partnership with places and maybe with those Western students who want to design marketing, so I just, I thought about that. Forgive me here. The, the billboards, I've seen those billboards and immediately Lloyd's went and painted their building more brightly. So I'm wondering if you're going to encourage people to be painting their buildings to make that thing colorful true? So, he said that there's more billboard schedule to come up and runs on I-10 and are you going to give some a hint or are you just going to wait to publish them in a newspaper or send them on Facebook?
Yeah, I, I didn't want to, I didn't want to jump the gun. You'll, you'll see two additional. These two will repeat themselves on I-10, both east and west, and then there will be two additionals that, that supplement on I-10 from, from Las Cruces. But we're also, we are engaged in conversation about doing what we're, what are, are skins on skins. So this is a skin that wraps on the billboard and we're looking at how we can do skins on skins for promoting festivals, events, attractions on seasonal, on rotating basis so that we can wrap, you know, over, think colorful for a period of time to promote Pickamania for instance, or, or an event, or exhibit, or what have you.
To make that advertising practice. Yeah, thank you. Only two more questions and then I shall be quiet. The advertising, which I think is really beautiful, all the stuff that you're doing is, is quite beautiful, is, as you see, is focused towards tourism. Bringing people here, we want them to come here, spend nights here, we want them to spend more than just an afternoon here, we want them to spend some money here. And I have been seeing some data that show that our retail sales, even though we have ups and spikes, kind of has a downward trend. And I'm wondering if you're planning to be working with some folks who are into economics or some way to measure any actual effects of the advertising on spending, tourist spending here in town?
I would love to set up a meeting. When would you like to talk?
There's some folks at the university, Dr. McGee, you know, Dr. is in community economics, so might be a good thing to do that. And then the last thing, my last question, is there a tagline or phrase that you would like us all to know and say when people ask us about Silver City? Something that we could be all saying other than 101 Reasons I Love Silver City?
I'm going to quote, I'm going to quote Sissy McAndrew and it's a line that was in the current intro that she wrote for the visitor's guide and she said, "Silver City, it's a, it's a great place to visit and a wonderful place to live."
Silver City, it's a great place to visit and a wonderful place to live.
And I say it, I say it all the time when I meet people in the visitor's center, when I travel around the state. It's really simple and I think it's really true to my heart when I say it and I don't think it's really difficult to stand by that one. I'm not suggesting that this is our brand, I'm not suggesting this is our motto, because I know that this community has gone through attempts at that and one of the things that we know statistically, to have something like New Mexico True stick in the minds of others, or Virginia's for Lovers, or what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas, costs millions of dollars and sometimes decades of repeat advertising to make those things really stick. And so, I've, I've not come to, you know, this council or this community saying, I think we need a selling line, per se, but that's one that I think that, you know, Sissy is such a wonderful advocate, as you know, and I, and it just resonated with me and it's really simple. I believe it, it's a, it's a great place to visit and it's a wonderful place to live.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other thoughts, Counselor Carr?
Actually, mine is just a comment and just on what Counselor Amy Smith said. As someone who drives back and forth from Albuquerque entirely too often, I really appreciate those billboards. They're very eye-catching and I'm hoping that they're doing their job because they're really nice to look at. So I'm looking forward to the next one.
Thank you, Georgia. You know, I appreciate the, the thoroughness of your, of your discussion and your report, especially since as far as outside of staff, we have some pretty big contracts with the Arts and Cultural District and you, you helped put us at ease in that we're actually spending the money wisely and that there's actually work being done and look forward to the next report. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. Any other reports? Ms. Brown?
Mayor Counsel, I guess I, I sent you an email just to update you about revenues, grocery seeds tax revenues and what's been happening over the first seven months of the fiscal year. We've been seeing a lot of downward trend for the whole fiscal year and it gets right into the retail portion of, of grocery seeds taxes. I've been working with tax and rev, up until two months ago, we were at nine and a half percent below projections, which is a really big number and I was getting concerned, but I knew that it couldn't be that big and, and so I've been working with them and, and based on the information that I showed you, and, and it's up on the website, so people can access that, is, is that we're, we're turning back around and, and I think they're starting to fix some, some glitches in their software up there so that we're getting more accurate information, accurate numbers and actually getting their money. But on, on top of that, you know, I just wanted to explain to you, you know, as the year goes along, you know, I'm adjusting the way that we're spending money because of what's happening with that. If we continue through the rest of the fiscal year at the 3.47% that we're down now, we would be a short $322,000. But so, at this, during the year, I, our biggest expense in the general fund is personnel cost. So, you know, I prioritize on which positions we're going to refill once they become vacant because I, I'd rather not fill a position than lay somebody off or cut hours or do things like that and, and just massage operations like that. And so, you know, just to refresh and reiterate, what I, the focus that I've, I've taken is we're always filling safety sensitive positions such as police and fire, then infrastructure. Actually, I could put water and sewer in, in public safety because that's how safety and welfare. Those positions are always filled as, as they, they become open. You know, Robert's staff has been short-staffed, I'm, I'm looking at ways of increasing some of his staffing in other ways. But then, infrastructure such as streets and parks and things like that, you know, those, it depends on how important the, the position is. And then we get down to quality of life and it, and it's, I'm sad to say that it's, it's the museum and the library that are at the bottom of the totem pole. And so, you know, we have had some openings at, at the, the library for, for a time, but it's because over the years, we've actually expanded operations substantially and, you know, now that we're just, we have to do a little bit less. The museum, we're keeping up at the same staffing levels that they've had for years, for many, many years. And then the last positions that I'm, I'm going to fill, especially when we have a shortfall, are new positions to the budget. And I, and I just bring this up because I was faced with a situation where I had a, an official pretty much demanding that I fill the position that was budgeted, but I'm not going to do that when I have other openings in other departments that, just to maintain operations rather than to fill a new seat. And so, if, if you have any direction for me to change the way that I'm doing that, I will, but unless, unless you don't have any changes that you're okay with my continuing going in that route, I will continue to do that. And there's not a lot of openings, it's just, you know, I, it's fiscal responsibility first. So, if you have any input, I'd like it.
Questions? Counselor Bedison?
In regards to input, I think continue with what you're doing. We've been very successful with you at the helm all these years that I've been on the council with, you know, maintaining our budget and still providing the services that we provide to the best of our ability. So I think that what you're doing is, is working well and continue doing that. Now, one thing I would like to ask you to talk about is lodger's tax. Our lodger's tax is doing quite well, actually. So, that's sort of an indication, since there's not a whole lot of construction right now, there's a little bit, but that's an indication that tourism in that respect is, is doing well, but we want to see those numbers in retail sales.
Tourism is doing well. Tourism and food and accommodations tie more closely together than retail sales and food and accommodations are, are, are up slightly, you know, so it's, it's retail sales that I'm having that hard time with tax and rev, you know, when they're You know, when they're putting out these numbers that are reported publicly and I'm using those numbers. And then I turn around and ask them, "Well, why are they so different than what I've projected and the last three years average?" You know, you use different methods of, of revenue projection. And then I get their revenue projections and the numbers that they have online are different than the actual numbers that they showed me? That I, there's something wrong here. And then in November, when you saw the big jump, well, that's when I started showing them these differences. So they must have found something, but that they never really wanted to admit it. So they just know that we're watching.
Do you think that they changed their formula somehow?
I think that there's so many staff changes at state level that I, I think it's just learning and understanding what they're doing. I mean, and that's straight across the board with almost most, most agencies with the state. And it's just, it's, it's very hard to, to deal with that. But we're just doing our job and staying on top of it.
So just one more question about that. So there's no indication, except for we did get that boost, like you said, in November. But if there's no indication that they understand why there's a difference between what's online versus what they're actually sending you?
Well, I, I think that they fixed that.
Okay. Thank you.
We, December actually showed negative numbers.
Oh, my goodness.
We returned everything.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Amy Smith?
I want to acknowledge, Ms. Brown, that I think that you are a strategic, thoughtful, and fiscally responsible person. And clearly you are also a financial detective when it comes to the state. And since I am particularly interested in the library, I have not pressed on you to fill any positions at the library. But I do wanna say that I am gonna work with the library staff on their services portfolio, probably in March, to do a rationalization process. Perhaps they're offering too much.
And that's, I think that's an excellent idea.
And I seem to be really amenable to that. So some work shall be done there. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
Definitely recommend that you continue focusing on public safety, water, you know, the health, safety, and welfare of our constituents. And when we have some extra money, we'll, we'll look towards the other things that we can improve upon. Any other staff reports? Anne? Ms. Mack, Mrs. Mackey?
I would just like to announce that next Tuesday, the absentee voting will start at City Hall. So that's the first day I can issue an absentee ballot. So folks can come to City Hall or give me a call at 534-6346. And we can talk about having that person fill out an absentee application prior to a ballot being given to them. And then on February 11th, early voting starts at City Hall. And that's where the vote tabulator machine is in the room and they can feed their ballot through the machine. And election day is March 3rd. And on that day, we'll have the One Voting Convenience Center for voters. And we've talked about that several times now. But do y'all have any questions about our election?
Thank you.
Councilor Madison?
Just one comment. We wanna make sure that everyone knows that they cannot come to the county to vote, to the county administration center, because we have a current school board election going on. That in order to vote, you must go down to City Hall right now until March 3rd. So I think it's really important to, to know that having a school board election running at the same time as a municipal election is very confusing to many of the voters that have overlapping districts with the two districts that are, that are up for the school board. So I just wanna clarify that, because I've had several people ask, "Can I, can we just go to one place and do all of our voting at once?" And unfortunately, no, there are two different procedures, two different places. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports, please? More water? Moving on? Councilor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move for a short break.
Councilor Condon? We have a motion and a second to have a short recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're in recess. Call this meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing entitled, "Approval/Disapproval of an Application for Extension of Water Service Outside Town Limits." The, the request is to extend a six-inch water line to serve a single residential lot located at 4360 Highway 15, located approximately 1,240 feet north of the intersection of Highway 15 and Ramuda Road. The applicant is Richard E. Pfeiffer and the authorized representative is Scotty Calloway. The property owners are Richard E. Pfeiffer and Ethel M. Pfeiffer. The town council will serve as the hearing board and I, as mayor, will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had ex parte discussions with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing or had any communications from the, from any party in this case?
No, sir.
No, sir.
We're all qualified. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony or who will be available for questioning, please rise and come to the podium to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn in, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing.
Aye.
Aye.
Your name?
Scotty Calloway.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear.
That the testimony I am about to give?
The testimony I'm about to give.
In the matter before this council?
In the matter before this council.
Is the truth, the whole truth?
Is the truth, the whole truth.
And nothing but the truth?
Nothing but the truth.
Under penalty of perjury?
Under penalty of perjury.
The hearing will be conducted as follows. The town staff shall present a brief synopsis of the application based on the application or actions taken by town staff. Then the applicant shall present their case. Next will come witnesses in support of applicant's case. The applicant, staff, or witnesses may then be questioned by the hearing board. The presiding officer will then ask the applicant if that concludes its case in chief and states that the proponent and its witnesses will remain available to be further questioned by the hearing board, by staff, or by opponents to the application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witness may address questions to the previous witness. But such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. At the close of testimony against the application, the presiding officer asks the applicant, "Is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?" Towns, Scott? Robert?
Mayor and council, as stated, this is a request for approval/disapproval on the, of an application for extension of water service outside town limits. The location, as stated, is, is proposed water extension will be in the ETZ and will serve the following property. It's a tract of land located in the southeast quarter, the southwest quarter, Section 24, Township 17 South, Range 14 West, in New Mex, in Grand County, New Mexico. Attached is a map with your package showing the, the outline of the property and the yellow line from Ramuda up to the property showing where the extension will occur. The proposed extension will commence at the intersection of Ramuda Road and Highway 15 and will continue north to the applicant's property located at 4360 Highway 15. The proposed extension would serve one residential connection to a site-built home, which is currently located at the applicant's property. The proposed extension would be constructed within NMDOT right-of-way along the east side of Highway 15 and would consist of approximately 1,240 lineal feet of six-inch ducted iron pipe. The applicant is requesting an, an extension of city water due to the fact that the domestic well located on the property has gone dry. A recent attempt to drill a replacement well resulted in a dry hole down to 600 feet. And I was just informed that actually, the actual depth that they tried to drill the replacement well was actually 700 feet and they did not get water. The property is currently served by a single, single-family residential liquid waste system and sewer service is nowhere near available to the property. The applicant has completed the required application for extension of water service in which he has complied with all requests from the town server. It's been determined that the anticipated water use of the single residential property will be one-third acre feet per year. The disposal of residential liquid waste is currently handled by means of a, of a liquid waste system as there is no public sewer available. A water impact study was not requested as no adverse impacts to the existing water system are anticipated. A sewer impact study was not requested as sewer is unavailable to the property. The public notification, legal advertisement was advertised in the Silver City Daily Press on January 2nd, 2015, which meant that we required 15-day public notification, a public hearing. The legal notice was also published, published on the town's webpage beginning January 2nd, 2015. The applicant and the authorized rep were sent certified letters on January 5th, 2015, which meant the 10-day prior notification of the public hearing by the applicant and authorized representative. Written notice of the hearing was also sent to the Grand County Commission as required. The findings, the town server currently owns 4,566.64 acre feet of water rights. Based on the 2014 pumping totals, the town produced approximately 2,293.42 acre feet of water or 50.22% of its water rights. The 10-year average of water production is 2,674.33 acre feet or 58.56%. The request does not affect the town's required water reserve of 456 acre feet or 10% of the water rights. The request is for less than the 10% maximum allowed of the town's remaining unused water rights. The proposed use of the water is for a single residential water connection. The general location of the property to be served is the southeast quarter or the southwest quarter of Section 24, Township 17 South, Range 14 West, Grand County, New Mexico, and contains approximately five acres. No request for sewer service is required as the home located on the property currently dispose of liquid waste by means of a residential liquid waste system. Public sewer is not available to the property. Since the request is to serve one residential property, no fiscal analysis was required. The applicant will be required to provide a letter of credit to the town server to assure that the proposed water extension will be completed in the amount of 125% of the estimated cost of the extension. This will meet the financial fitness requirement. It's town server city utilities department recommends approval of the application by Richard E. Pfeiffer for the extension of water outside city limits to serve a single residential property located at 4360 Highway 15, which is located north of Ramuda Road, based on the findings listed above and the conditions of approval listed below. Conditions, the applicant is responsible for providing engineered plans and specifications to the town server city for approval prior to construction of the water line extension. The plans and specifications must be stamped by a professional engineer. The applicant will be required to complete a work order issued by the town server city allowing construction to begin. The applicant shall also provide a letter of credit to town server city to assure that the proposed water extension is fully constructed. The applicant is responsible for, for providing a halftime inspector to monitor construction of the water line extension. The applicant or subsequent property owners will be required to make full payment of fees prior to connection to the water system. Construction of the water infrastructure shall commence at Ramuda Road and extend north along the east side of Highway, of east right-of-way of State Highway 15 to the property at 4360 Highway 15. Residential connection at 4360 Highway 15 shall have, shall install a pressure-reducing valve on the service line immediately after the meter. All representations made in the application are true and correct and survive the execution of the final water agreement are incorporated herein. Applicant must also commence construction of the extension within one year from date of approval of the extension by the town council. If not, the approval of the extension is revoked and the applicant must reset for approval.
Any questions? Any questions? Councilor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question of procedure. May I ask it at this time? So my understanding of the application and what is recommended by staff, all findings and conditions must be met and must be stated in any motion, correct? Correct? Well, either Mr. Escada or you, because I know that you can speak on.
You can, you'll, the specifications will be included in a written decision signed by the mayor if you vote in favor of this extension. It's, since it's a hearing, findings, conclusions of law, and an official signature of the town approving or disapproving will be required. The points that Mr. Escada is mentioning now will be in that written report. And I guess Mr. Escada will be preparing that decision for the mayor's signature.
Typically, I haven't, I, typically what's been, the way we've been handling it is once the council approves it, I will send the applicant a notice of decision, not necessarily with the, the mayor's signature.
Okay, then you, but, but your notice of decision will include all the representatives?
Yes, all the findings.
And the conditions that you're making?
Yes.
Right, so, so just as a point of, of procedure, I just wanted to, you know, because we always only do these if, if it moves for approval for this. And it is, we have to state per the findings and the conditions right into the record. We don't select from the findings or the conditions.
No, you'd be adopting the recommend, the findings and recommendation of staff. You'd put it that way.
That's, I was just clarifying the, the procedure before we, we hear the applicant, just so that I understand, to make sure we're doing everything properly. So, thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Calloway? Will you present your case?
What do, what is your concern here?
Uh, just it's your opportunity to present your case for us to find in your favor.
Right, it, basically, the well that he had caved in. They pulled the pump, then they, "We're gonna drill deeper," and it starts caving in. So then they pulled out and moved over a different location, went 700 feet. And, uh, he, he lives in, the Pfeifers live in Nevada. And I, I've known Dick Pfeiffer for, ever since he would come to Silver City. And he called and asked if I would follow through on it.
So this appears to be the only alternative for water for the property?
There's no other alternative. You know, unless, like, they would have to get a truck and haul water. So.
Okay. Is there any questions for, uh, Councilor Madison?
Thank you, Mayor. So the applicant, and you're representing him, is willing to meet all the conditions that just been read into the record, that have been recommended by staff?
I really not understanding you, ma'am.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Escada, staff, read into the record?
Yes.
The recommend, the conditions that the applicant must be responsible for. That's the conditions of approval.
Yes.
And I just want to ensure that the applicant is willing to meet all those conditions of approval, of which there are nine.
Yes, ma'am. And there were engineers incorporated due to engineering.
And that answers my question. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? Any witnesses for the? Any witnesses for the applicant? Any witnesses in opposition to the applicant? Please be available for questions as we proceed.
Okay.
Is there any questions for anybody else?
No, sir.
Mr. Calloway, does that complete your case in chief? Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application and render its decision?
Yes, yes.
How does the hearing board decide? Councilman Beckson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve an application for extension of water service outside town limits. The request is to extend a six-inch water line to serve a single residential lot located at 4360 Highway 15, located approximately 1,240 feet north of the intersection of Highway 15 and Ramuda Road. The applicant is Richard E. Pfeifer, and the authorized representative is Scott Calloway. The property owners are Richard E. Pfeifer and Ethel M. Pfeifer. And I move this approval per staff recommendations of the findings and of the conditions of approval that have been read into the record by Mr. Escada.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Amy Smith?
Mr. Mayor, a second motion is stated.
We have a motion and a second as read into the record. Is there any further discussion?
No.
We have a motion, a second as read into the record. Roll call.
Councilman Beckson?
Aye.
Councilor Amy Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval of consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, this is, these are the annual resolutions that are required to move forward with our housing rehab program and affordable housing program, so that we can continue to apply for state and federal funds for those two programs. None of the resolutions have changed in many, many years, so that's why it's under the consent agenda, to continue to move forward with those same programs.
I'll entertain a motion. Councilman Beckson?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda. Do I need to read into the record for the clerk, the A, B, C, D, E? Okay. Which includes, A, approval of resolution number 2015-02, adopting a fair housing policy; B, approval of resolution number 2015-03, citizen participation plan, CDBG program; C, approval of resolution number 2015-04, residential anti-displacement and relocation plan certification; D, approval of resolution number 2015-05, Section 3 Plan; and E, approval of resolution number 2015-06, CDBG procurement policy.
Councilor Connaught?
The motion is stated, please.
We have a motion, a second as read into the record. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion, second as read into the record. Roll call.
Councilman Beckson?
Aye.
Councilor Amy Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, under new business, is approval/disapproval of pawnbroker bond principal D. Charles doing business as pawn lot. 1775 Highway 180 East, Silver City, New Mexico, bond amount $5,000. Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor?
May Mr. Charles? Counselor?
The only comment I want to make is that the, I have reviewed the bond for legal sufficiency and it is acceptable. Do you need to do it now, or do you want me to come back? Do you want to review the bond?
No, I've already reviewed it.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is D. Charles. I've submitted a business license application. Excuse me. I've met with the community development department. I think that I brought everything up-to-date that I need to do. I have the approval of the fire marshal. The chief of police has inspected the building. I have security bars and doors on the building. The chief of police did suggest I do a different alarm system. My perception is it will not be a junk store, and I do not handle firearms. With that, I would ask for the council's approval to proceed with my business license.
Is there any questions for Mr. Charles? I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve a pawnbroker bond principal, D. Charles, doing business as pawn lot at 1775 Highway 180 East, Silver City, New Mexico, bond amount of $5,000.
Councilman Beckson?
Mr. Mayor, a second motion is stated.
We have a motion, a second for approval of a pawnbroker bond principal, D. Charles doing business as pawn lot, 1775 Highway 180 East, Silver City, New Mexico, bond amount $5,000. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
No, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I have one more thing, please. The process is not the easiest. I will have to tell you that the planning development department was absolutely great with me. I could not have done it myself. I made a couple mistakes up front. They were absolutely great, and clear up to the city park. Anyway, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is discussion in action on recommendation of library board in reference to the Fred S. Norton Estate. Mr. Brown?
The main reason that this is on the agenda is because I told you I would bring it to you by this date. At this point, I just want to give you an update of, maybe Nick can assist, or Nick left. Just an update of what they've done. The library board foundation met with the museum foundation, and they found some similarities and some common areas that they can move forward in moving in the same direction. In fact, the, the, some of the investments that, people with the museum society, the library society requested that they assist them until they were able to recruit individuals that had qualifications to help them invest. And I believe that they have been willing to assist them at this time. They, at their next board meeting, they will be looking at changes to their, what's it called? Bylaws. I'm sorry, it's been a long time. Their bylaws to go more in line with what the museum society does. I don't think they're looking exactly the same, but more in line with what they're doing. And then they'll bring it back to you so that you can make a final recommendation on where the funds go.
Is there any questions for Alex? Councilman Beckson?
Just a quick question, Alex. So, as you said, the two entities all met together, and so it, all of the estate monies, because I know that we talked only about the first part of the monies, not, I guess the subs went, not the full estate, when we made recommendations. So it seems like they're working well together, and this is going to be beneficial to kind of, it'll be beneficial to use the knowledge that currently exists at the Silver City Museum Society.
Museum Society has, from meeting with Eileen and Tracy, there's been some very good conversations back and forth. Tracy and Eileen as well have been meeting constantly, and as well as meeting with me and keeping me up on what they're doing. But yes, the two, it's hard because the museum society and the library foundation, they have been working very closely together to get, make sure that you are satisfied and comfortable with recommending that the funds be sent to the library foundation.
Which is actually something that we had when it was first brought up. I mean, I know that that is the proper place for them, and I think the fact that we're using the knowledge base of the, even though they're two different, 501(c)(3), it's two different entities, it's nice that we have the resources and the knowledge base at the Silver City Museum Society that can work with the foundation, even though they're not part of the library foundation, they're not part of the town per se, but it's nice that they're willing to work together to make things the best.
When the investing more forward funds came, it would have been nice to have this in place for, so that the library foundation could have benefited from what was happening. Well, they weren't in existence yet, and that's why they were formed, because of that situation. But now that they have the opportunity, they're ready, and they have those resources now with the society to have, to move forward properly.
Well, I just hope, you know, I'm sure they'll hear this, but I also appreciate the collaboration and their willingness to work with each other, you know, to really do the best that they can with the funds that are being received, you know, no matter which foundation, and I like that coordination and that cooperation. It's a nice partnership in terms of seeing us move forward and being able to use those funds appropriately. So, I appreciate that, and thank both directors as well for their input and their work on it, too. It's a great sort of synergy itself. I like it. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Your question, Councilor Ray? Any other questions for Alex? You've been, you've been part of those discussions?
Not directly with the board meetings, but I've been in discussions with Eileen and Tracy, and they've been keeping me up-to-date, and the progress has been made, and that way I can make, I've made suggestions to them to go when they want back, to meet with them, and...
Satisfied with what the information from both parties have been? And pretty satisfied in the direction they're moving?
Yes.
I definitely recommend you keep moving forward on this same path.
Okay, and after the next board meeting, the foundation, we should be very close to being able to come to you, and they can report on what they're doing directly, so that way you can see specifically what they're doing and be able to make a recommendation to the, to whoever's giving us the money. Yes, I tell you, it's been blocked.
To the estate.
To the estate, I'm sorry, yes.
Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of request for proposal number 14/15-1P, Silco Theater Interior Renovations.
Mayor, Council, the town has received one RFP. The committee of five representatives, some from the Main Street, and some from the Town of Silver City, have, recommends that the RFP be awarded to White Sands Construction of Almagordo. They've been deemed qualified to do the remainder of the work that needs to be done to get the building up and running as a theater. Not all of it, because some of it will be done through state contract, but the work that can be done through state contract, they will be, they're qualified to do that work. And so the way we will move on from here, as we have different stages of the projects have been identified and what can be done, needs to be done. And as the funds become available, we will sit down and negotiate with the contractor for each piece as the funds become available. We're very close now. You'll see the next item is, we'll bring another $100,000. I've met with Main Street yesterday, and I believe they're very close to acquiring all the funds that are necessary to complete the project. So with that, it's our recommendation that the RFP be awarded to White Sands Construction.
Councilman Beckson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, we're talking about various pockets of money and funding that will be consolidated, like you said, or at least used as the different funds become available, to move forward on the different aspects of the project. So, at this time, could you discuss where, I mean, you said we're almost, Main Street is almost at the point of getting all the funds together that's necessary. Could you kind of just give us a little bit more information about the present funds that are available and their sources?
You know, yeah, the present funds that are available are as part of loan proceeds that we, the last loan that we got. And then the $100,000, once we complete this next application, which is Main Street Capital Outlay Funds, or lead of funds. And then there's one source of funding that Main Street's working on right now, which I don't know if it's secured yet specifically, but, so I don't want to, what if they want to...
Part of the RFP process that we did go through, as Mr. Brown stated, is that we're qualifying the contractor, and in that case, we can work with them and negotiate to get the most work done that we can for the money that we have. So, it's really not putting anything in jeopardy because we would not be exceeding the amount of funds available to spend on the process. Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. I think, just to clarify, Mr. Brown, I think you commented that there will be some, some through state contracting. And would the same construction firm be involved in that, or is that going to go through state contracting? Could be someone different?
That'll go through state contract. I believe that, that is like the seating and some things like that, so...
Okay, so it would be someone that the state selects?
Yeah, the state has already put on state contract, so they've already been qualified.
Okay.
And there's a price agreement with them.
Okay, I just want to...
We will be moving forward from here with this qualified contractor to do any work that we will not be doing under state contract, so...
Yeah, just wanted to clarify that for the public, and I think for all of us, too, to make sure that we understand how that's going to work. So thank you, and thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Councilor Ray?
In command. I move to approve request for proposal 14/15-1P, Silco Theater Interior Renovation by staff recommendations.
Councilman Beckson?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion as stated. Do we, Councilor, need to have the... Do we, Councilor, need to have the construction firm read into the record again? Or just the statement per staff recommendation sufficient?
The bid number identifies the transaction.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion as second for approval of request for proposal number 14/15-1P, Silco Theater Interior Renovations per staff recommendation. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
We have a motion as second as read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of March 3, 2015, election workers. Mrs. Mackey?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is our list of election workers that will be working on March 3 at the voter voting convenience center at the Women's Club and also that evening at City Hall for the absentee early precinct board. And I'm asking your approval for this list of workers. We will have training for all of them and we'll all be learning the new auto vote system. And on Election Day, the actual vendor that provides the auto vote system will be present to assist if we have any questions, but we will be trained during the election school with the vendor and myself for normal election process and procedures, but we'll receive training on the machines. So, do you have any questions?
Any questions? May I entertain a motion? Councilor Bettison?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the March 3, 2015, election workers.
Councilor Anderson?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion as second to approve the March 3, 2015, election workers. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
We have a motion as second as read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of notice of intent, ordinance number 1236, an ordinance adopting the restoration of the Silco Theater as an economic development project within and for the Silver City Arts and Cultural District pursuant to Sections 5-10-2B, NMSA 1978, Local Economic Development Act, and Section 16-22A of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico.
This is an ordinance that staff has been working on for a while. It's to bring a hundred thousand dollars to go towards the Silco project. It's one of those funding sources that I just talked about. It's a, it's a new process, a very new process, where we're the guinea pigs to try to figure it out. He invented it, just so he, and that's why it's so complex. But basically, what it is, is under normal circumstances, the, when the state or municipal government gives an incentive for a private project, you've got to go through many, many different steps and processes. Technically, this is just a grant from the state to the city, but they're trying to amend that very complicated process to work into the public-to-public transaction. And so, we've gotten a lot of the way there. There's still a few things that need to be worked out, but the very basics have been worked out. I think it's more format of what, the way the transaction moves forward. And then, now I'll let Robert talk, so you can get more board about it.
Alex was very eloquent in describing exactly what went on. The whole process for these theater restoration programs statewide anticipated that all the theaters that would be restored were owned by third parties, private people. The state can't give money to private entities unless it comes under the, as an incentive from the municipality under this LITA, Local Economic Development Act. When it was pointed out to the Economic Development Department that we weren't, that we owned the theater, that there was no third party involved, that there were no anti-donation clause issues involved, they said, "Well, we have a process here that we have to do this, 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 and this." I said, "Yeah, but you don't need that process because this is not going to a third party." So, I drafted some documents, sent it to their general counsel and the general counsel was satisfied with the proposal. One of the elements though, that is still required is a notice of, is an ordinance that formally adopts the Silco Theater as an economic development project. The fact that we have anticipated that, both in, from the day that the town bought the theater, to making it part of the Arts and Cultural District, and everything else that we've done is not enough. They want something very specific. But, so they have, they've seen our ordinance, but it's gone to another department in the state and they haven't finished doing their review. So, using my extra sensory perception powers, I have imagined what they would like and I have added that, we originally drew what we sent up to them. I think they're gonna want a couple more points. This project participation agreement, which is normally an agreement between the municipality and the third party, private entity, is now gonna be a project participation agreement between the municipality and the Department of Economic Development. The intergovernmental agreement is a document that basically is most likely going to have a clawback provision saying that if we take the hundred thousand and don't use it for the purpose that we're saying it's gonna be used for, they can get it back. So, I know those two documents are going to be required. So, we want, because there's a time constraint, that the money has to be expended within a certain amount of time, to expedite the process, the NOI was put on the agenda. Since that time, in conversations with their general counsel, we've anticipated that there's gonna be a little bit more that's needed. So, we've added that to this NOI. So, at this time, it would be appropriate to amend the NOI that was originally given to you in your packet. This is a notice of intent, this is not a passage of the ordinance, this is opening up the venue for discussion. So, the two changes are in the title, adding, after Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, what's been, what I'm suggesting be added is, and further authorizing the execution of a project participation agreement and an intergovernmental agreement between the town and the state of New Mexico. So, that'll be added to the title, that'll make them happy. Also, you have in the ordinance, there are three pronouncements. The restoration of the Silco Theater is formally adopted as an economic development project of the town. The second one, the town manager is directed to secure funding for the project from any and all available sources, including grants from the New Mexico Economic Development Department. And three, the town manager is hereby authorized to file necessary applications and to commit the town to the terms and conditions expressed therein, including where necessary, the pledging of appropriate collateral for money loaned or granted. And this is a new paragraph four. The town manager is authorized to execute both a project participation agreement and an intergovernmental agreement with the Economic Development Department of the state of New Mexico, describing the project and the means and measures to be taken and furtherance thereof, which shall be binding upon the town. Now, this doesn't take away, it's authorizing the town manager to enter into these agreements, but it is not a mandatory direction that he do so. If he finds that these terms and conditions are not appropriate for the town, he can say no. But to make this a good ordinance for the general counsel's office of the Economic Development and who else up there is gonna be deciding this, we need this language. So, at this time, I think that I would suggest whoever, and we don't have a sponsor on this, so speaking earlier to Councilor Ray, and Silco is in his district, he indicated that he would be the sponsor and that he would be making a motion to amend the NOI by adding that underlined sentence to the title and adding a paragraph four to the ordinance, to the notice of ordinance.
Councilor Bettison?
Before we do the amendment, I have a question for you, Councilor. In the amendment that is suggested to the title, you say that the participation agreement and intergovernmental agreement will be between the state of New Mexico and the town, but then number four states between the New Mexico Economic Development Department and the town, which is the better of the two? I mean, it should be consistent. So, either it's the state of New Mexico and the town, or it's, well, the title in number four...
We can say the, use the same language with the Economic Development Department. Because I really don't know who this project participation agreement's gonna be with.
Well, then why not do it general enough to say the state of New Mexico, to include the New Mexico Economic Development Department?
Then in the paragraph four, let's say with the state of New Mexico.
I mean, I thought that might be the reason for the suggested change in the title, because it's a little bit broader?
Well, the title is to inform the public about what we're doing. The specifics is, doesn't have to be the regurgitation of what the title is. The title is notice to the public, the body of what's to be done is one, two, three, and four.
Right.
That's why I did it that way.
Yeah, and I think my concern is to make it broad enough so that if it's, if that project agreement is not with the New Mexico Economic Development Department, but it's with some other entity of the state, it's still, is captured under state of New Mexico.
Then we can leave that line out if that would be more comfortable. An intergovernmental agreement with the economic, with the state of New Mexico, you can leave out with the, leave out Economic Development Department of...
There's also the opportunity, because this is just the NOI. It's not the final decision of an ordinance that we can amend it, that one thing at that time if we need to.
We may have to amend it once we get the feedback from wherever it is. But if this is comprehensive and informs the public about what we're doing, then it will not have to be re-advertized and go through the whole process again. If, if they say, "No, it has, it's not to be this, you gotta pledge Alex's new car," then maybe we won't go with it and maybe if we have to change it that dramatically, then we'll have to re-advertize. But this is telling the public what we're gonna do, what the circumstances are, and then there are four things that we are authorizing the town, the town manager to do. So, there's no problem with, we can always add back it, once we find out that it's gonna be the Department of Economic Development, then we can put that back in right now, because they're gonna be reviewing what we do tonight.
Correct.
So, if you'd like, then in paragraph four, it'll read, "The town manager is authorized to execute both a project participation agreement and an intergovernmental agreement with the state of New Mexico."
Okay. And if we need to change it...
Or an agency thereof.
Yeah.
We'll put that in now. Or an agency thereof. Or an agency thereof. That covers everything and everybody. And we don't have to change the title any more than what I suggested.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we, if, unless they come back with significant changes, that serves as a catch-all for everything so that we don't have to do any more amendments.
And I would inquire of Councilor Ray, would you like me to go over the language one So, you would be moving, and you can adopt what I say, you would be moving to amend the NOI for ordinance 1236 by adding the following to the title, after the word "New Mexico," and further authorizing the execution of a project participation agreement and an intergovernmental agreement between the town and the state of New Mexico, or an agency Also, it's part of your amendment, you're adding a paragraph four, "The town manager is authorized to execute both a project participation agreement and an intergovernmental agreement with the state of New Mexico, or an agency thereof," comma, "describing the project and the means and measures to be taken and furtherance thereof, which shall be binding upon the town." That would be your amendment.
Okay, here we go.
I move to approve of a notice of intent, I'm, I'm, to amend, a notice, I'm, ordinance number one, two, three...
You could actually move what the council just, you could actually just, I move what Councilor Scavran just...
Okay, I move what Mr. Scavran said, by adding...
Amendment.
Amendment.
And you're, he's already said it. Is there a second?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion to approve the notice of intent, ordinance number 1236, with the amendments stated by Councilor Scavran.
We have a motion to amend ordinance number 1236, adding to the title and further authorizing the execution of a project participation agreement and an intergovernmental agreement between the town and the state of New Mexico, or an agency thereof, and also adding a new paragraph four, "The town manager is authorized to execute both a project participation agreement and an intergovernmental agreement with the state of New Mexico, or agency thereof, describing the project and the means and measures to be taken and furtherance thereof, which shall be binding upon the town." Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
We have a motion as second as read into the record.
Motion to amend.
Is this, do we use a vote here? For this, we have a motion to amend as read into the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
To approve the best in terms of now, now NOI...
We have heard a lot of discussion on the NOI and the amendment that we just did. I'm, I'm in favor of it and it is actually going after a grant specifically through the Economic Development Department, but I do, I like the additional flexibility that has been requested. I would entertain a motion. Councilor Bettison?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve, do I have to say amend it or just read the law? Okay, it's not an ordinance, okay.
It's not the ordinance.
I move to approve Notice of Intent, Ordinance Number 1236, an ordinance adopting the restoration of Silco Theater as an economic development project within and for the Silver City Arts and Cultural District pursuant to Sections 5-10-2B NMSA 1978, Local Economic Development Act, and Section 16-21A of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, with...
Read the whole?
I don't have the rest of it. And further authorizing the execution of a project participation agreement and an intergovernmental agreement between the town and the state of New Mexico, or an agency thereof. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
We have a motion as second for approval of Notice of Intent, Ordinance Number 1236, an ordinance adopting the restoration of the Silco Theater as an economic development project within and for the Silver City Arts and Cultural District pursuant to Section 5-10-2B NMSA 1978, Local Economic Development Act, and Section 16-21A of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, and further authorizing the execution of a project participation agreement and an intergovernmental agreement between the town and the state of New Mexico, or an agency thereof. Is there any further discussion?
Counselor Betterson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, as we previously discussed on another item, this is one of the things that, well, if this funding is awarded, that we will be able to have that contractor move forward with it. So, this is one of those sort pieces of funding, if this is awarded.
Yes, it is.
Okay. And may I also then blame the Counselor Scavron for the fact that we have to submit resumes for this?
That's not me, that's them.
So, you couldn't work that out. I just, I just, so that's, they're still retaining that one aspect of this, is that, of the original third-party type of thing that they were doing, that we had to provide our resumes as a lots of...
I knew nothing about that aspect until it was mentioned to me by Mr. Marshall, that this is ridiculous, and he's tried to argue with them, and they say, "No, you need to submit your resume," because they're on this kick now of making sure nobody else can do their job corruptly.
Aside from that, I really am in favor of this. It works very well with our economic development plan, all of the other aspects that we have been doing over the years, and this ordinance speaks to, to what is essentially what a Local Economic Development Act is all about, is ensuring that we can do these sorts of things for arts and culture and for, in terms of the economic development plan that the town has adopted, that the council has.
I would like to say one thing about the people that I've been working with in economic development. They are extremely helpful, very professional, and they worked very well with the town to get around this problem, and they're continuing to be that way, and in fact, a lot of that has to do with the relationship that Alex has built with them over the years.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I think, and I really appreciate the work that both of you have done, and Alex as well, with the relationship, being able to facilitate something like this, and being able to, for the first time, to actually do something where it's an intergovernmental agreement type thing, because it's the first time, right, as you mentioned. So, I think this is a, I'm very much in support of this ordinance, and I'd like to see the Silco complete it. So, this is one, one more peg in that, or one more little piece of the puzzle to, towards completion of the Silco. So, thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments or discussion?
We have a motion as second as read into the record. This doesn't need a roll call, does it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Counselor Betterson?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
We have a motion as second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn.